Good evening, everyone. We'll call to order this regular meeting of the Willow City Council for Tuesday, April ninth, two thousand and twenty four. The time is six oh two P M. Item two on our agenda this evening, our pledge of allegiance, uh, city engineer John Wanger, would you do the honors and lead us in the pledge tonight, please? Thank you, John. Item three, roll call. City clerk Davis Hoover, please.
Councilmember Thomas.
Present.
Councilmember Sprague.
Present.
Councilmember Rodden.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hudson.
Here.
Mayor Hanson.
Here.
There was present, sir.
Thank you, Davis. Item four, changes to the agenda. City manager Marty Brown, any changes to the agenda this evening?
There are no changes.
Thank you very much. Item five, public comment and consent calendar forum. All matters on the consent calendar are considered routine and are approved by one motion and vote. Unless council members or the city manager first request that a matter be removed for separate discussion and action. Individuals wishing to address the city council concerning consent calendar items or regarding matters that are not already on the agenda are invited to make oral comments of up to three minutes at this time. And please address your comments to the mayor and council members and not to staff or the audience. And as a reminder by state law, the city council is not permitted to undertake any action or discussion on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. First off, is there any public comment this evening on any matters not on the agenda? If so, please approach the podium. Anything? Nothing? Okay. Very good. I was calling for any public comment on any items not on the agenda this evening. Now would be now would be the time. Yeah. Please approach the podium, sir. It's not required, but it is appreciated if you do state your name for the record, please.
And it's D M. And um the Alameda Bureau of Electricity became the Alameda Power Authority. And what they've succeeded in doing over the last thirty, forty years is um to reduce uh their customers' bills. And they've reduced it. This year, they're looking at a savings of thirty-four million dollars. They get their energy in a consortium from the geysers and from wind energy and other alternative energy sources so that they're they're basically pollution free now. And the difference in price, the price differential is approximately thirty-five percent differential between P G and E and the Alameda Power Authority. So Alameda Power went into a agreement with, I believe, the city of Napa and other sources a bunch of years ago. And so they've realized these benefits. And considering how cheap solar panels are becoming the city of Willows could go into coordination with the county and with Orland to buy solar panels. Solar panels are being guaranteed for thirty-year lifespan right now. So and the the cost effectiveness of solar panels is so cheap that it would be very cost effective to purchase enough solar panels, I mean, and start start building up a backlog of inventory of solar panels so that they could, the city could reap the benefits of of where they would be basically getting energy for free maybe in ten or fifteen years. And uh working in terms of getting government grants and stuff like that. But um that's basically what I wanted to say. The Alameda Power Authority would probably cooperate in terms of facilitating information and and how they do it. And I think it would be a productive thing because self-sufficiency would be a a real benefit.
Okay. Thank you for your comments, sir. Is there any other public comment tonight on any matters not on the agenda? Okay, very good. Any public comment on any of the consent calendar items this evening? Well, first of all, I'll read. I'll read. Go ahead and read them first. You may have a copy in front of you as well. Reference to the consent calendar night, item five A, register approval. Consider approval of the general checking payroll and direct deposit check registers. Item five B, minutes approval. Consider approval of the March twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-four meeting, regular city council meeting minutes. Item five C, wastewater treatment plant, also known as the W W T P, bar screen and slide gate. Consider approval of an allocation of one hundred and forty-two thousand twenty-nine dollars and authorize Infomarc to repair the W W T P's bar screen, electrical and slide gate as part of Infomarc's contract with the city. Item five D, annual payment and construction project for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. Consider approval of a resolution authorizing the city manager to number one, execute an agreement with pavement coatings company an amount of six hundred and thirty-three thousand, six hundred and forty-two dollars for the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three annual payment and construction project. Item five D, number two, execute the contract amendment with Coastland Civil Engineering for one hundred and five thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars to provide construction management and inspection services for the project. Five D, number three, establish an overall budget for the project of eight hundred and one thousand, five hundred and fifty-six dollars and item five D, number four, approve a budget amendment to provide additional funding from Fund Three Ten, which are R S T P funds. Item five E, Willis Public Library H VAC unit replacement. Consider approval of a resolution accepting the improvements associated with replacement of three H VAC units in the Willis Public Library and authorize the filing of the project's notice of completion. And finally, item five F, emergency work authorization, Ken Road Fifty-Seven sinkhole. Consider approval of a resolution ratifying the actions taken by staff and retroactively authorizing, excuse me, the city manager to pay Wahlberg Incorporated for emergency repairs on Ken Road Fifty-Seven. Pleasure to the council in reference to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'd ask that we pull item D for discussion, please.
Mr. Sprague has asked to pull item five B, the annual payment and construction project fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. Any further?
To pull item C.
Five C. Councilmember Rodden has has requested to pull item five C, the wastewater treatment plant, bar screen and slide gate item. Anything further from the council? Okay, all right. First of all, Mr. Rodden, item five C.
Well, it's it's I would I'd just like a little more information on it and where and where the money's coming from. This was previously approved monies. There's no additional impact on the general fund. As a result of this, five C wastewater treatments and repairs. And then anything over two thousand, we have to approve, but they spend the money or we spend the money for everything over. I apologize. I read it and I'm just clarifying.
No, no problem. So the answer to your question about whether they spend the money or or we spend the money. The way we've done it in the past for situations like this is we increase the amount of the budget that they're allowed to spend annually and then they orchestrate. We we make them adhere to our policy with respect to getting, trying to get at least three bids. And then once they obtain those three bids, if the council approves the additional monies, then we would turn to Infomarc and say, okay, get it done for that amount. Okay. So so that and what was your first question? I'm sorry.
It was, first of all, who who pays for it?
Oh, yeah. And and it was also, so it this money will come out of the sewer fund. It does not impact the general fund at all. And these were identified improvements in the capital improvement program, although they were not this much in the capital improvement program. And one of the reasons why is because when we actually looked at doing the modifications and improvements to the bar screen, we actually found out that there was another couple of subsequent pieces of work that had to be done. There had to be some electrical move. There had to be a slide gate that was replaced to isolate things. So there was additional additional projects that were identified in order to repair the bar screen. So they they were identified Infomarc as well as a analysis we had done of the wastewater treatment plan just a couple of years ago identified a whole number of of capital improvements and this this was one of them.
Thank you.
Anything further, Mr. Rodden?
No, thank you.
Any further discussion on item five C?
Yeah, I do. Mr. Sprague might. Correct me if I'm wrong. I I when we did this, when we did the sewer rate increase and we did a the sale of certificates of participation for about three point five or three point two million, something like that, and retired the debt on the treatment plant that we had with U S D A. But my recollection was that we, as you pointed out, we knew we had some costs associated with improving the treatment plant. So do these funds, I know it comes out of the sewer fund, but does it come out of the category of normal maintenance and operation? Or were we able to put that into the certificates of participation for the improvements? Not that if it's one pocket or the other, it's still the same set of pants of the sewer fund.
It will. It will most likely come out of the certificate of participation. Okay. Bond proceeds that we've received from that. There was three point two?
Three point three.
Three point three. That's what I thought, too. The primary expenditures on that were these improvements at the wastewater treatment plant. We also have a consultant doing the design of upgrading the five-way lift stations. That'll be there. And then we're also going to be coming back with a sewer project this year to rehabilitate some sewer lines. So between all of those, we anticipate spending that certain.
That was kind of my point is we're not reducing that in-town maintenance and operation cost by a hundred and forty-two thousand. That, okay, good. Thank you.
Anything further, Mr. Sprague?
No, I'm fine. Thank you.
Uh, councilmembers, anything further? Merciful, five C. Okay, thank you. Mr. Sprague, five D.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. Appreciate the I took a drive around to identify some of these projects that the city manager or city engineers proposing for the expenditure on this particular item. And it was interesting to take a look at those alley approaches. I never paid any attention to how bad those alley approaches are and and so on. You've identified those. But I drove I drove down Humboldt where you're you're identifying where we go from Wood Street down to the knuckle at Sycamore and then turn and go then east on Sycamore and improve that. Is it is part of your design or idea for doing that is taking care of that sidewalk curb and gutter that doesn't exist from the motel that's there now until it comes around the corner?
Um, no, because those are, those should be frontage improvements when that property develops. If I'm thinking about the right property, it's it's the vacant property south of the motel.
Yeah, but the 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 entrance to that, to the vacant property is pretty nominal by comparison. The rest of that is part of that creek bed that goes down, the drainage that goes down, which I would assume then is city, city property. But it seemed like to me it would be appropriate if you're going to do the asphalt to go ahead and do that turn on that as well. And then is it possible to if for the cost associated with that encumber the property that is being approved by it, that we could recapture that in the future time?
Well, we hadn't included that in the design. That's not a bad idea. Frontage improvements are typically done by the unimproved property owner whenever they develop it. I mean, that's a very common, as you well know.
But who knows how long that that could be?
Right. But we are, we are upgrading pedestrian ramps to make sure that that are within the project limits to make sure that they're in conformance with G D A standards, but we did not include that that infill section of site.
All right. Well, that would be a thought if at all possible to be able to do that. If we had other funds, I know in our development impact fee funds, we've got a substantial amount for streets and sidewalks, I think three hundred and forty-five thousand or something like that. But any rate, I would ask that maybe we take a look at that and see if there's a possibility to get that done as well. Second, and maybe more important, I drove down Crawford where you're identifying improving it from Sycamore down to Laurel Street. And if the Google map tells me correctly, that's approximately nine hundred feet of linear feet of of a street. However, if I I go further to the east, then I would suggest that Culver is actually in worse condition than Crawford as opposed to Crawford. Crawford seems to be my my evaluation of it seems to be one of our better streets within the city of Willows. But if you look at what I handed out, I hope everybody got a copy of this. Are you are you able to see what I provided, John?
Uh, yes, and I drove that and actually did some quick cost estimates that we'll go through in a minute.
Okay, so the second page there actually shows the Oak Street going in front of the sheriff's, excuse me, sheriff's department administrative building and whatnot. And I'm suggesting that it's a shorter route, but it's certainly one of the worst, if not the worst, within the city limits. And I also with the idea that we have now improved Lassen Street going down to Sycamore and the fact that we've got the new courthouse, we've got the new park. Uh, we're anticipating Sycamore Park. We've got the grant of four point two million dollars, if I recall, for doing some upgrades there. It seemed appropriate to me if we're successful in identifying some wayfinding signs and bringing people off of one sixty-two down to Lassen Street to Sycamore. And then to go one block further to Oak Street and be able to improve Oak Street that would then give us a better entrance going down to Sycamore Park. And I would suggest that looking at the footage there as opposed to the nine hundred feet on Culver, uh, Google is telling me that my suggested route here is eight hundred and twenty-five feet that would include the improvements to that parking lot there at the Sycamore Park. Unless, of course, we're going to include that parking lot improvement with the bond or with the grant that we've got for the park. If so, if you go further east on Oak Street, you could go another two or three hundred feet and and improve that all the way down or the majority of Oak Street. At any rate, I would just suggest and I would encourage the other council members to take a drive down Culver or Crawford, excuse me, and then compare that to Oak and see if you wouldn't agree that the money would be better spent on improving Oak Street. Not to diminish your efforts on any of this, John. That's not my point. My point is just looking at it seemed like a better better use of the money currently.
Oh, I I completely understand where you're coming from and it and it is frustrating that we don't have more monies annually to spend, but I don't, I'm not sure whether you were, I know you weren't on the council, but just as a little bit of history. So back in two thousand and twenty-one, the county did a countywide pavement management program that included Willows and the other Orland and the other agencies. And as part of that, and we had done, I think we had done a pavement management program back in two thousand and fifteen. So this was kind of an upgrade or a refreshing of that. And the philosophy behind the pavement management program is it looks at the conditions of your streets. It looks at the monies you have available to spend every year. And then what it tells you is where to most wisely spend your money to get the biggest bang for the buck. And that is a little bit counter counterintuitive to the worst first scenario, which is, you know, you take a street like West Oak Street and it's horrible. Matter of fact, when when we did the pavement management program, you go out and you analyze, you you look at each street, you take a representative sample and then you rate it on there's seven different measures that you go through. But the bottom line is you come out with a score and it's very similar to uh, when when you're in grade school, you know, zero is a F and a hundred is an A. Well, West Oak Street rated sixteen, which is really bad. The streets that were recommended out of the pavement management program, if the council or the public were to go out and look at them, they'd have the exact same reaction that you did or I would, you know, that's, gosh, you know, this is not the worst one in the city. But it's at a point of degradation that if we treat it now, it will last for another fifteen or twenty years as opposed and and we can do that at a much lesser expense than if we were to go in and do West Oak Street and completely rebuild the whole road structural section. And I'll give you an example of that. So South Crawford contains about forty-six thousand, eight hundred square feet of surface, or it's about fifty-two hundred square yards of surface. And in the in the bid, in the in the construction documents in the bid that we got, that cost to do that street with a material called rubberized cape seal is right at about a hundred thousand dollars for for South Crawford.
West, excuse me, for the entire street of Crawford, that portion of Crawford, a hundred thousand?
Yep. Um, West Oak Street instead of forty-six thousand, eight hundred square feet is in Crawford. There's only twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred and sixty square feet in that segment. And the cost to do, so that's not quite half, but almost half, the cost to reconstruct West Oak that I went through today is about two hundred and seventy-eight thousand. So it's it's almost three times the amount and it all has to do with what you have to do to the street in order to reconstruct it.
Yeah, that's a complete rebuild from.
It is. It is. And so the the per square yard difference with South Crawford, Humboldt and Sycamore that we're doing, it ends up being about forty-two dollars a square yard to do the method that we're using. And that's including doing some of the sidewalk work and ramp work that we're doing versus what's required on on West Oak is about eighty-six dollars a square yard. So it's a it's a significantly different or significantly more expensive endeavor. And so what happens is you can go after and do those streets, but the problem is you get a lot less streets done for your money. Dilemma is how do you spend your money most wisely? But then periodically go back and do the streets like West Oak that are in really bad shape. And and honestly, it's a it's a balance, you know, it's not a perfect science where we can say, you know, this is how to, this is exactly how to figure it out. But what I will tell you is that what we did to determine the streets that we have in our plan right now is every year, and it'll be next month, that I'll come back to the council. And Senate Bill One, S B One, that was passed a few years ago mandates that we point which streets we're going to create in the next in the next year. That doesn't mean we can't change them, but it's an indication to the state that we're spending the money that they're giving us. So as part of that, what actually last year, we had identified Humboldt, Sycamore, and we actually identified Culver in front of the school. And we went out and looked at that street and there's some real issues along the edges of that street that were going to push the whole the whole, it was going to require a lot more and different type of work than we had originally thought. So we we came back and said, well, instead of instead of Culver, we switched it to Crawford because that street was about roughly the same payment condition index, but it wasn't going to require some of the more extensive work than Crawford, or excuse me, than Culver was. So we did make a change. We certainly can consider that, but what I would, what I would throw out as a suggestion is because the construction documents are already done, because it's bid, because we've already got a bid for what's before you tonight, we can certainly consider West Oak when I come forward next month and have the list of streets for consideration of what we're going to do in fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five and possibly include that on the list at that point in the game. But and I I I want to say I completely understand where you're coming from. I don't disagree at all that that West Oak is in horrible condition. It's just, it's making sure that we get as much done as we can for the money that we have available.
Now, I understand your logic. The other dynamic, I sat on both streets for about fifteen minutes and I counted three cars on Crawford. And I counted eleven cars on Oak Street in that same period of time, just mid-morning, just, you know, to see how how that was and and so on. Two of those, I think of the vehicles, too, ended up being trucks, not just cars. And of course, the bumps, the the potholes just get bigger and bigger every time some something tries to. Understand your logic. It was just a suggestion to take a look at that, but you don't have the money, you don't have the money. Unless you can see other places that we could draw that money from to be able to go ahead and do Oak.
Yeah, and if we, if, I mean, if the council wanted, we can certainly reject the bid that we got, go back, change the plans to take out Culver. I'm sorry, Crawford, and then put it back out to bid. But the issue that we're going to run into at that point in the game, it's if we do that, it's probably going to end up costing somewhere between a hundred and seventy-five and two hundred thousand more than than this, the bids that we already have right now. So.
All right. Well, I'll leave that up if if there's any desire for the council to pursue that at all. I'd certainly leave it open, but I'm going to force the issue. Thank you, there. You're welcome, John. Thank you.
Any further, Mr. Sprague, in reference to item five D? No, thank you, Mr. Wanger, for that explanation. I mean, you educated me a number of years ago on the pavement management index. Like, that was, that was a very good explanation and very good information because the P M I was, as you said, recently done just a couple of years ago, countywide. And you have, you have a limited pool of funds and and the P M I is a is a tool utilized to identify what, you know, the best use of those funds. So I completely agree with your assessment. I agree with Mr. Sprague's comments, too. The area of West Oak and Marshall is is in terrible shape, but it's one of many. So anyway, it's unfortunate, but anyway, so, okay. Thank you very much. Councilmembers, any further discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'd like to underscore what I think, of course, at least made me think of, which is the prioritizing of improvements to the trans roads in the community should be looked at, looked at based on what leverage they might provide. The money we're, excuse me, the money we're going to spend on the park. And the the better the roads leading to that park and the facilities that are going to be added, the more total impact it leverages, the impact, the probability that people will come. So I know there's a methodology, but I would also like to take into consideration, can we leverage a road repair so as to take greater advantage of other growth and development and repairs in the community, just the thought of process. I noticed there were five bidders. Can you tell us who the other four were?
Uh, I don't. I know Knife River was one of them. I I don't have that information in front of me, but I could certainly get that to you.
I was curious more than needing because it is the lowest bid and we know that rules about that. And lastly, for my education, the R S T P funds for which we're taking four hundred and eighteen thousand, is that coming from some other activity or or area or in that we have to now defer because we extracted that money for this process?
That that money comes to us actually from the county every year, and I believe our allocation is somewhere I want to, I think it's around eighty thousand a year. And we've compiled, we've amassed that to several hundred thousand dollars over the last several years. So we're proposing on using that R S T P funding. It's Regional Surface Transportation Program funding, I believe. We're going to be using that partially to fund some of the sidewalk work that we're going to be doing as well as we're looking at using those funds on an annual basis to supplement the S B One monies that we get. So it doesn't impact the general fund. It's an ongoing revenue source that we need to utilize, or it would be suggested that we utilize that for road repairs.
And we're not deferring some other activity. How would that funds be used if we didn't take them?
It it has to be used for projects that involve streets and sidewalks.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Rodden, the R S T P funds are are funds like John pointed out, they come, actually come down via the Green County Transportation Committee. You know, the state money trickling down.
Fuel packs, something.
Thank you. Mr. Thomas.
Well, it just seems to me that by repairing or reservicing Crawford and Humboldt, we're deferring as if we did Oak, I'm assuming those streets would need more expensive repairs in the near future. Is that correct? And that's the whole reasoning behind it?
Yeah, there was, when I did the presentation, there's a if you have a a a graph of your P C I's on the vertical scale and time on the horizontal scale, what happens is streets degrade and once they hit about ten or fifteen years, kind of drops off really quickly. And the and the payment management program tries to catch those streets that are either just starting that degradation or just before because you could extend the life for another twenty years with a lot less money.
Makes sense to me. Thank you.
Anything further? I'm good. We're good. Is there any public comment reference to the consent calendar this evening? So So please approach. Okay. Thank you. A pleasure, the, the pleasure of the council in reference to the consent calendar. And make, um, the motion that we move on the rest of the items on the consent calendar. Mr. Sprague, are you, uh, moving to approve, uh, all, all items in the consent calendar?
Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Sprague has moved to approve the consent calendar as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Vice Mayor Hudson has a second. Further discussion? Mr. Hoover, there are, uh, some resolutions on the consent calendar. So this will be a roll call vote tonight, please. Thank you.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Sprague?
Yes.
Councilmember Vaughn?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hudson?
Yes.
Mayor Hanson?
Hi, Mayor Curie, I'm going to say thank you, Amos. Thank you, gentlemen. Moving on to item six. Good night, John. Drive safe. Thank you. Item six, discussion and action calendar. All matters in this section of the agenda are discussed and will be acted on individually. Individuals wishing to address the city council concerning any of these items are invited to make oral comments of up to three minutes at this time. Please address your comments to the mayor and council members and not to staff and or the audience. When the mayor calls for public comment, please raise your hand to be acknowledged. While not required, the city requests that you please state your name clearly for the audio recording. And as a reminder by state law, the council is not permitted to undertake any action or discussion on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. And I will call for public comment, uh, when, uh, as we discuss the items. Item six A, November twenty twenty-four sales tax ballot measure. Consider adoption of a resolution approving the placement of one point five percent sales tax measure on the November fifth, twenty twenty-four presidential election ballot. City, city manager Marty Brown.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. The agenda item that's before you this evening is to approve, um, placing a one point five percent sales tax ballot measure, um, on the November ballot for twenty twenty-four. Um, as, um, I think the council and even the public is acutely aware, we've been having these conversations about the city's structural deficit for approximately a year now, actually. And, um, as a result, last fall, the council, um, initially on a four to one vote approved putting a fiscal, declaring a fiscal emergency and placing a sales tax measure, one cent sales tax measure on the March ballot. We later then discovered that we needed a unanimous vote of the council in order to do that. And short of unanimous vote, we would have to wait for a regular election for at least a fourth this vote to place a sales tax on the ballot. In the time period since that was initially approved in November until, uh, earlier this year, um, I think that we realized that a one cent sales tax was barely going to, uh, get the city out of the woods, so to speak, and that really a one point five cent sales tax would be, um, a better long-term strategy for the city to be able to rebuild reserves and, um, eventually have the city have a, approximately a ten percent reserve and be able to, uh, fill the gap on the approximate one point three to one point four million dollar structural deficit that it currently faces starting in fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. Um, so with that, the recommendation this evening is to place a one point five cent sales tax on the ballot in November. Attachments that are included with your staff report, uh, include the most recent mid-year budget update and general fund balance forecast that Andy Heath, our finance consultant, presented in late January to the council, as well as a chart that Andy created a deficit mitigation or general sales tax revenue, uh, generation chart showing the various comparisons of the half cent, one cent and one point five percent sales tax, uh, potential generation, as well as finally the most important documents, the resolution and the ordinance that is required in order to place a sales tax measure on the November ballot. Um, I think that concludes my presentation unless there's any questions for myself or the city attorney on that.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Ms. Brown. Any questions for Ms. Brown, uh, before we, to, uh, public comments?
I, uh, have a quick question of her, but I don't want to limit that if you want.
No, go, no, go ahead, Mr. Sprague.
Um, Marty, on page, um, in our graph, what it's page forty-eight, it's attachment one, which shows the, uh, financial status, general fund forecast. In looking at the twenty-two, twenty-three, excuse me, the, yes, the, excuse me, first looking at the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year as, um, audited, we were right at, it looks like if I, my pencil's straight enough to be able to go across, we had a five million dollar budget. Then the following year, twenty-two, twenty-three, we jumped up to just a smidge above seven million, almost two million dollar, at least two million dollar increase. Is there any particular item or list of items there that off the top of your head that contributed to that expense jump of two million dollars within, from one fiscal year to the next fiscal year?
Well, I can tell you that in fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, um, the budget for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-three was already approved. I had just started and obviously had been approved in June. And it was approved year twelve full-time budget in forty, of which the entire first fifteen months I was able to go on revenue. And then in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, um, when we realized we have a significantly more general fund reserve, we were able to determine with immense help of course from Andy, though he didn't have somewhere between nine hundred thousand and one point four million dollar reserve because I was told my back there. It was more like, it was two million. Of course, those are one-time monies, like in that, it's the ARPA funds from the federal government and the sale of twenty-oh two funds from PG&Es, um, uh, twenty-eight. So there was some additional money that hadn't been accounted in reserve before. So we had a higher reserve. And so in twenty-two, twenty-three, um, I recommended to the council that we go in vacant positions that we've had vacant for some time, um, including the finance department, community development department, public health department. And that, uh, initial jump from twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three was, um, excuse me, was about four hundred and twenty thousand dollar more of a debt, three to, uh, about four hundred and twenty thousand dollar more deficit than the previous year. So that would be the initial first jump. And then as you know, this last year, it was the increase in sheriff's contract that was unexpected.
But that, 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 that sheriff's contract is not in the twenty-two, twenty-three budget, that increase? Or is that, is that include the sheriff's budget increase?
No, it says the, the increase we didn't experience until five, twenty-three, twenty-four.
Right. That's what I thought. So, so the two million dollars, if I understood you correctly, the two million dollar jump from one fiscal year twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two to twenty-two, twenty-three, was about four hundred, maybe five hundred thousand in salaries that you, you, you filled some positions. So another, where did the other one point five million go, do you think, then?
Well, so the general fund was, the, the deficit, the structural deficit from twenty-two and twenty-two, twenty-three jumped by about four hundred and twenty thousand by adding five additional positions.
Right.
And then the following fiscal year, after negotiating with the sheriff, we had an increase in the contract that was unexpected. It turned out to be an effective course of four hundred thousand. So that right there is an eight hundred and twenty thousand dollar roughly, uh, leading into our, our, um, reserve, which is about two point two million in twenty twenty-two.
Now, may, maybe I'm just not making myself clear. Independent of the reserves and independent of the income, the chart here, if I'm, unless I'm misunderstanding this, it actually just shows a jump of two million dollars in expenditures. Am I missing something there?
Marty, don't you remember we could, we determined, I believe correctly, that the government money, the PPP money and private enterprise and all the money we got from the government was posted as income, but it also had to be posted as expense, that it was, it's basically an anomaly associated with COVID. That's why the big jump. We can't explain that jump based on spending more money. We base it, explain it based on COVID and what it did by dumping money on the city and requiring us to expense it, to show it as expensed out. Is that not true?
Um, I think this is a conversation, I mean, again, I wish we'd have this conversation sooner. It's like, Andy's not here. He, this would have been great questions for him at the mid-year budget on January twenty-four. I, I'm explaining it the best I can. I, I guess I don't really understand what the function is. He didn't spend two million dollars in one fiscal year, so I'm not really sure.
That's what Forrest is asking. Did we actually spend, but between one year to the other, it's two million dollars? The answer is not really.
Well, there's, there was.
Change over one year was about eight hundred and twenty thousand between the added positions that happened in twenty-two, twenty-three and the change in the sheriff's contract.
Yeah, but the sheriff's contract didn't happen until the following fiscal year, not that year.
It's COVID money.
Okay, what I understood it to be was if we received a grant, and I know Nate was pretty good at getting grants, that becomes revenue. So our revenue was up as well as our expense. So we had, I don't know what we got in twenty-one or twenty-two, twenty-three as far as grant money, but we would have received grant money, which we also then expended.
You're right, Rick, and it also applied to the COVID money.
Yes, so for the.
Well, yes, it was grant money.
The items for the fire department, et cetera, et cetera, that money came in, that was revenue, and then we also had.
And expense.
Yes.
Yes, there's, the, the revenue from prior years before Andy started did not include grant money and ARPA money and the four twenty money. All of that was lumped somewhere else and he brought it into the general fund, which is how you're supposed to do it, including your grant. So since Nate's been here, he's raised over two million dollars in grant money, which is now reflected in the general fund as his, um, revenue as well as its furniture. Um, the ARPA money was put into the general fund, which had been there before, it was sort of off, you know, being calculated separately. We sold, um, PG&E credits for over four hundred thousand dollars. That also was not in the general fund that he started. It was brought in, he started expending it. So when you expend grant money and those additional one-time monies, you then also have to post it as revenue as well as.
Well, that's, that's actually gives me an acceptable explanation because as you point out, the income column went up as well. So if, if all you did was, that was income and it went out again, I could see where the expenses would go up as well. Thank you. That's, that's adequate. It is when we, after you, Mayor, if you want to open.
And if I may, Forrest is correct. We will not be able to convince the citizens of Willows that we just arbitrarily spent two million more dollars from one year to the next. That will not fly. So it has to be explained as an accounting procedure resulting in changes in way things were booked and resulting in a lot of grant and government money being booked as income and expense, which is what Forrest said. It all went up. Uh, and, but, but again, it looks on the surface, when you see that big delta, that what happened? And that's what he asked. I think we have an answer. I just wanted to be credible, concise and, and not get into a circuitous dialogue about, we then lose credibility.
Yeah, Mr. Vaughn, I'm glad you posed a question because I, I just, I'm glad you made your statements. Mr. Sprague's comments or, or, or his questions are, you know, obviously valid questions. But correct, and, and Marty, your explanation leading up to that was all, was all accurate as well and, and part of the equation with finally, finally able to, uh, you know, you know, move from uh, below minimum staffing to minimum staffing levels within, within city operations. But, uh, coming out of COVID, ARPA funds coming in, budget changes as we brought Andy in, uh, uh, you know, different, uh, uh, procedural, uh, budget changes, you know, uh, updating our budget, you know, modernizing our, our overall budget. So between the ARPA funds and the grant funding coming in, that was, so that, those, those are the answers right there. So good discussion. Any, any further questions or comments in reference to?
Not yet, if you want to.
Yep, public. So very good. Well, open, open up, uh, uh, this matter for public comments at this time in reference to, uh, item six A. Are there any public comments? In reference to the November twenty twenty-four sales tax ballot measure? Any public comments? Okay, thank you. Councilmen, questions, comments? Would like to begin? Mr. Thomas?
Well, when I look at it, um, the one and a half percent uh, with a fifteen-year sunset, actually gets us back on our feet for a substantial length of time, which allows us to work on the other things that we need to do, such as, uh, economic growth and development and get some houses built, some commercial buildings built, some employment happening. I see as we have opportunities with sites and the rest of it, but the window for economic development is resolved with the sales tax increase. Um, currently, if you spend a hundred dollars a week uh, on taxable items in city Willows, it costs you seven dollars and twenty-five cents. After this increase goes through, a hundred dollars a week spending creates eight dollars and seventy-five cents or a dollar fifty cents per month increase. Fifty-two weeks is seventy-eight dollars a year or six dollars and fifty cents a month. It's another tax that the people have to pay, but fortunately, from what we've been told, forty-eight percent or more comes from travelers through our town. So I think with our deficit to where we are, we have very little choice and very little opportunity to find a way to survive the city without passing this sales tax measure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I, uh, see the one and a half percent increase as an opportunity. Um, I am particularly eager to promote the value that will come from this, not so much what we did or didn't do and that we're in a desperate way and that this will somehow bail us out. I'm highly opposed to that. We'll talk more about that in the plan for education and otherwise. We are blessed in a way that Orland is doing the same thing. If you read the article in the paper in which not only did the council comment on their proposal for sales tax agrees, so did citizens come to the, uh, back microphone and support it as well. Um, uh, clearly you, any business, and this is a business, needs to invest in the future. And the future requires revenue and revenue in our case, in this, in this particular example, is sales tax. Yes, there are other forms. Yes, it'd be nice to have a dynamic economic engine operating within the three square miles that makes up the city, but that does not exist and it is not an easy fix. Can it be done? Sure, if you give people a reason to come to town. But, but the fact is the one point five percent presented in a positive way with what the, what the citizens will receive. I'm particularly eager to know and to share that forty-eight percent of the money that will come from this increase will be paid by people who visit the racetrack, people who visit Walmart, people who come down the I-five and up the I-five corridor, get off on Wood and one sixty-two and spend their money. So that is, that's to me is almost like a gift. It's just silly not to leverage that income. So I'm excited. I think we can do it. I think Orland will be putting stuff in the paper and sharing uh, with people their mission and reasons. And I strongly encourage us not to say that somehow this is a bailout. Somehow we need this to survive. While it's true, it's not a selling point for what we need for the future, sales tax wise, city wise, citizen wise and otherwise.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. Vice Mayor Hudson?
No, I think that we all agree that this is something that we definitely need to keep the city, uh, moving forward so that we can start looking for other revenue, uh, sources as well with future developments and hopefully new businesses coming to, to our town. The one question I did have is, I was looking at item on the, it's marked page forty-nine, it's the general fund financial forecast. And it shows the, the bar graph that the percentage is going down. And that doesn't include the new increase to our law enforcement contract, does it?
Uh, yes, that's from the mid-year budget.
It does have it in there or it does not? Because I don't think that it had taken place yet by the time that we did that mid-year budget.
Um.
Oh, yes.
Yes, it has, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Um.
We actually did a contract in December for three year.
Yeah, so Andy did include the, um, sheriff's two and a half year contract.
Okay, perfectly. So I, that's just my one question. No, I mean, it's something that we need if we want to start developing our own law enforcement and keep our citizens safe with hopefully our own law enforcement and keeping our fire personnel, you know, sufficiently equipped with equipment that operates fully. Um, no, I think it's a, it's a positive thing to put out there for our citizens to decide. So that's what we're doing. We're hoping to do.
Thank you, Mr. Sprague. Any further?
That's it. That's all I got. Mr. Sprague?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Matt. Um, I'm not going to argue the fact that we have a deficit. There's no doubt about it. We can argue how we got there. I have my opinion. You good folks have your opinions, but nevertheless, the reality of it is that we have a big deficit. However, I'm reading recent articles, uh, written by Dan Walters and others in regard to this other initiative that's going to be on the ballot statewide. And essentially, if, if you recall, we had a presentation from the city attorney that indicated to us that if this statewide budget or statewide. statewide budget or statewide initiative does in fact pass, and we have passed a simple majority tax initiative, that it becomes null and void if the state, what am I correct, Madam?
Um, I don't know if that whole sentence is accurate, but yes, I gave a presentation.
Right.
And yes, there's initiative on the ballot that we don't know what the outcome is.
We don't know what the outcome will be, but, but if you'd speak up for me, if you would, if I recall correctly, we could run the risk of passing this with a simple majority. And if the other statewide ballot initiative passes, it could make our simple majority tax increase null and void.
It has nothing to do with the simple majority issue.
Okay.
It, it has to do with how tax initiatives are written and implemented. And so if that initiative passes, which it sounds like there's a low likelihood that it will, but let's say it does, the, there is a risk that eventually whatever is passed now or whatever taxes that are currently being implemented
Right.
could be found to be void or needed to be amended.
Okay, or need to be amended. Right. Because if this one does pass the statewide, it goes back to twenty twenty-two on any taxes that were
But that's true for any tax
Right.
Regardless of when.
My point there is, is having that as a concern. And then reading through the narratives with our, with our agenda item here, you make reference to, staff makes reference to public safety, law enforcement, fire, emergency medical and whatnot, between the narratives and the resolution and some other documents associated with this. We make reference to public safety probably no less than eleven, twelve times. And we put it into a quote unquote category of top priority for the city. So I look at this too, and then I see where we, what you identify in our, in, in the literature that you gave us, that we have a 1.3 million dollar deficit, and that public safety is repeated over and over and over again. You make reference to the, the main thing that contributed to the deficit, if I understand it correctly, was the new law enforcement contract that increases our annual deficit by coincidentally 1.3 to 1.5 million dollars per year. There's, that's the explanation for the 1.3 million dollar deficit that we currently have, if I understand this correctly. Then the projection for the one and a half cent sales tax increase is a little over $2 million. So if I look at the, let's say, 1.3 million dollar deficit for the law enforcement, and then, correct me if I'm wrong, but my recollection was that our fire department has a 580,000 dollar a year cost associated with the fire department. And then depending upon if we looked at this and said that if we wanted to have an ambulance or increase our ambulance service or whatever, I might suggest, or I do suggest, that this sales tax be site-specific or, or more specific, and identify this as a public safety initiative. Now, I do understand that that will increase the voter threshold to two-thirds, but I think it would give the public that are watching us here tonight and these good people over here with the idea that the, this would have somewhat of a lockbox on it. You make reference to this having an oversight committee or tax, sales tax oversight, and that the city shall maintain a separate fund and then do quarterly reports for the first three years and then every five years or an annual every after five years and so on. But the point is, is identifying a special fund that would in fact secure the number one purpose for government, which is public safety, fire, and police.
It's actually to provide for the common good.
I'd have to say public safety would also include our sidewalks, our roads.
May I finish? May I finish? And then you can argue with me, please. Thank you.
Just clarifying, not arguing.
Okay. I'm just, and I don't discount that, the rest of those things, but those things are identified as number one purpose of government, and it's identified as the number one purpose of what we will spend this money on. So having said that, I would suggest that we revisit this and look at something that I think probably would have a better voter approval, let me say, in November, that if the people that were voting for this knew that this went specifically for law enforcement, police, or fire, and possibly ambulance, I think you would have more success at that than going through this particular process. That could, depending upon what the state ballot initiative does, I'm reading things that look like the, the state ballot is in fact gaining popularity amongst, amongst the public, amongst the voters. We're one of the highest, if not the highest, I think one of these articles say that we're the fifth highest taxed state within the, within the United States here. So we're ranked five highest at thirteen and a half percent, including local taxes and so on. So that would be my suggestion is that we revisit this and see how we craft this in such a way to be a public safety initiative specifically for public safety, fire, and possibly ambulance, if we feel like the funds are there for that. Thank you. Now.
Mr. Hudson?
Yeah, I'm a little bit confused because I believe when we tried to pass, I was part of the volunteers and was for pro Measure H, and I'm pretty sure you're avidly against a public safety ballot measure, exactly what you're depicting we should push this off as. And you were so against it, but now you're for one. So I'm just trying to pick up the pieces as to where we're at with this because you, on one hand, completely go against the same ballot measure you are now telling us we need to do.
No.
That's exactly what you did.
You're absolutely right.
Okay. And so now you're saying we need to do that ballot measure, which you're already adamantly against, when we're saying we need this money for multiple things, which is the upkeep of our parks, the upkeep of our roads, upkeep of our sidewalks. You're right. There is a chance that it's going to be spent on law enforcement and first responders and the things that our people need. But it can also go towards other items as well. And that's what we're needing it for, is to make sure that we're able to take care of everything. If we limit to just one, then we're not able to take care of everything else.
Okay. What it would do so that you could take everything else, it would relieve the general fund of the 1.3 million dollar deficit that you described into it. The general fund would become flush if this were in fact earmarked specifically for law enforcement. But let me answer your question on this. I read the fine print in Measure H, and the fine print said two things. Number one, that it set up a committee that could in fact identify different uses for that money than as opposed to fire protection. The second thing it is, it also allowed, allowed the city to use those funds for land acquisition. Had those two items not been in there, I would have certainly supported it for fire protection. But what you did is unlike what you say, is it wasn't site-specific to a particular item. They threw in other items that allowed other money or other expenditures out of that same fund. And that's why I opposed. So my, the distinction here is that it gets crafted a little bit more truthfully, let me put it that way, and then have the, the security that this is all that money goes for. So that's why I opposed it then, but this was why I'm, I'm proposing it now. Because I ju, I just, the next thing on our item, on our agenda here is to come up with an action plan or an education plan regarding the city. I'm going to be real honest with you. This is, this is a propaganda effort here, but if I can mix my metaphors, putting sales, or putting lipstick on this sales tax pig is not going to let the pig fly. It's not going to make the pig fly. But that, we can discuss that in a few minutes. But nevertheless, there's the distinction, Mr. Hudson, is how I opposed the previous one and why I would support this one. Thank you.
Mr. Hudson, anything for that?
No.
Yeah. Vice Mayor Hudson brought up a valid point in reference to that was Measure H, which was a fire and emergency medical sales tax measure, which you did adamantly oppose.
I did, and for the two reasons I just
You've already, yes, I heard you.
Okay.
Yes.
So if you can't accept that as an explanation, that's your problem, not mine.
I, I don't have a problem. I was listening to you. Thank you.
Ready if you're ready to hear.
I just have a couple. Mr. Vaughn, so thank you for the discussion. Past meetings, we've had extensive discussion in reference to this proposed sales tax measure before us this evening. I do appreciate our very competent staff, City Manager Marty Brown and City Attorney Carolyn Walker, for the excellent work that you put forth in crafting the resolution as well as the ordinance, if, if the measure is ultimately successful. All of, all of our majority council discussion and thoughts and ideas were all, were all included in the, in the resolution, the ordinance. I, I don't see anything that was missed. I, every, you know, like I said, we've had extensive discussion on, on, on all of these topics at, at more than one meeting. So excellent work in crafting, crafting the ordinance and the resolution. I have, I have absolutely no suggested edits. In reference to the discussion in, concerning the general sales tax measure, or the, the general purpose tax, sales tax, exactly, that's what this is. This is to fund core city services. Willows is behind the eight ball. Almost all of the surrounding jurisdictions around us, as we've discussed before, have enacted sales tax measures in the past. So we've drug our feet, bringing this forward, and finally, here we are tonight, and dragging our feet has resulted in a 1.5% tax measure. That's what we're going to be asking, asking our, our citizens to approve. Mr. Vaughn, excellent point on, in reference to tax funding, a, a good chunk of this money will be spent by people that don't live here in, within the city. Obviously, obviously our visitors to the city, Walmart, Thunder Hill, the hotels, there are individuals that are here spending money, buying fuel. It's very difficult for municipalities, you know, in, in, in these times of extremely high costs and rising costs to survive on 1%. And, nobody around us does survive on 1%. And that's why they brought these, you know, these sales tax measures forward to their, to their citizens, as well as our sister city, Orland, with their initial one-half percent. And now they're considering, they're asking for another one-half percent to bring, to bring it up to 1%. So all around us. So here we are, we're playing catch-up. It's, it's much needed. The resolution, the, this, the, the final whereas on, on page one, whereas a general sales tax is needed in order to maintain minimum staffing levels in all city departments, including law enforcement, fire, community development, public works, administration, library, and finance, the core city services that are charged with delivering. And, and Mr. Hudson, you mentioned public safety sidewalks, sure, street sidewalks, that's why I always included public works, infrastructure as part of, part of public safety discussion. So this, this is to fund our, we are, we are hell and sworn to provide basic public safety services, law enforcement, fire protection, and with that, following right behind that, public work services, you know, safeguarding our infrastructure, the entire city infrastructure. So I, I consider those public safety services as well. But this is well-crafted resolution and ordinance outlining core city services. This doesn't just, just outline law enforcement or fire or public safety. No, absolutely. All city services. I'm very, I'm very happy with, with the language as written, including the ballot measure language, the Willow's sales tax measure. Shall the City Willows enact a general transactions and use tax in the total amount of one and one-half percent to be used for the purpose of providing the citizens of Willows with critical city services, including and not limited to law enforcement, fire, emergency medical, public works, community development, recreation, administration, library, and finance under local control and annual audits with, with a sunset date as 15 years. Be approved. That's the question on the ballot. Core city services. That's what we're, that's what we're looking at. That's what we're talking about, about funding. I think this is the, the right thing to do. None of us want to pay higher taxes, but this, you know, a sales tax measure is a very fair mechanism to, to provide the funding because all visitors to the city share, share the burden. So here we are. Those are my, those are my thoughts. Mr. Vaughn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I just want to comment a little bit. Forrest points out correctly that the state of California is heavily taxed because it's a heavily socialized state where a lot of things are supposed to be provided by public funds, which means you get to pay for somebody else's wants and needs. So that's a fact. California is a heavily taxed state. That causes me to believe that just with the general public sensitivity to taxes, that going from a 50-plus-one vote to, to get this revenue for our needs to a two-thirds is a fatal flaw. It's part of the reason why we avoided that. Just general response to taxes should prevent a two-thirds yes to it. So I think the 50-plus-one becomes a possibility, whereas a two-thirds, in my opinion, based on what you know, is an impossibility. This, this state, or the state buyer, whatever it is, wherein they're going to go retroactive on taxes passed and all kinds of things, I call that a what-if. In all the years of running business, there have always been what-ifs. I've never made a business decision based on what-if, because there's no end to what-if. The reality of that tax law is if it does get passed and it does go retroactive, it will create financial chaos for the city, the counties, probably the state. And that in itself will prevent it from being passed. I mean, I'll take bets on that. I don't think it's going to pass. I don't even for a moment believe so. I, we don't have a police service. So if we do police and fire, somebody in the audience is going to say, we don't have a police service. What are you talking about? They don't understand. The reality is that we can't offset some of the contact, I suppose. An ambulance is a private enterprise. I know we have an ambulance problem, but keep this in mind. Government is really, does not like to fund private enterprise. Their ambulance services are all private. When AMR takes it all over and they have the entire state, you'll see how that works. But right now, we have AMR, and we have AMR, and we have Orland. But, but I cannot for the life of me justify asking the public to fund a private enterprise. I'm sorry, it's a problem, but it's still private. So I, I, again, I desperately want us to support the sales tax, and I desperately want Forrest to vote for it. Because since day one, he has opposed it on a multitude of reasons, which vary at times. And that's his right to do, and I respect that. But I think that over the time that we've listened and learned, and as we look to the future, I think we should be together as a group saying, we can do better. We need the money to do better.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. Further comments or thoughts?
Well, I just listened to the dialogue, raised a question for me for the attorney to answer this. What happens should our tax measure pass with two-thirds majority and not just a simple majority?
Absolutely.
But would that not preclude the concerns that Mr. Sprague had?
No, that's why I made that correction. Because it doesn't matter how it passes, the initiative would affect all taxes.
Even if we had a two-thirds majority?
Okay, so I, yes, that is my answer. But I, again,
I know you're asking to answer something. We have no definitive.
Well, exactly. With the caveat is that it depends because there's a lot of what-ifs there. So I can't answer specifically on your hypothetical because I don't know how the courts are going to interpret that initiative. If it does pass, how they're going to apply that law, new law, to existing tax initiatives. So I can't answer that intelligently because I don't have that information. But as we see it now, there's no reason to believe that it makes a difference whether it's passed or vetoed. What I think you're getting at, whether it's a specific tax or whether it's a definite tax.
Would it change to?
I think it, I think it matters how you place it on the ballot. If you placed it on the ballot as a general tax, that's how it would be used regarding how many votes
Right. Well, everybody I've spoken to on the street, I have not run into anybody that does not understand the situation we're in. And they're not happy with it, but they were, those folks that I've talked to said they would support it. Just in general conversation about the situation where the city is, they don't want the city to not function. They don't want the city to disincorporate. They want the city to continue. They don't want the city to disincorporate. They want the city to continue, and they recognize that. And so, it's possible that we'd get two and a third. It might, that might be pie in the sky, but I think there's a good percentage. We're going to get far above 50.1%. Because I think folks recognize this town is the town that they like. They want to be here. They live here. They want it to prosper, and we need to have revenue to make it prosper. So I think we will find, we will be pleasantly surprised with the support we find for this measure in spite of what it is.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. I agree with your comments. Further comments from the council?
Just a, Mr. Sprague, just a question on the ordinance itself. Section number seven, use tax rate, it says excise, an excise tax is hereby imposed on the storage, use and other consumption of, in the city of tangible personal property. And then it goes on to say, after the operative date of this ordinance, again, for storage, use and other consumption. Use and consumption is, we know what that is. I'm concerned when I read storage, I interpret that as an inventory tax that has caused a lot of businesses to leave California for their warehousing and so on, so they don't have to say that. Am I misinterpreting, Madam Attorney? When this says excise tax is hereby imposed on storage, could that be then interpreted or misused to be considered an inventory tax?
I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head.
I'm sorry?
I do not know the answer to that off the top of my head. I mean, I could certainly research that and how the courts have interpreted storage as opposed to inventory. But I think that the storage is the actual normal use of that word.
I'm sorry, can't quite hear you.
I don't think there's anything specific or special about the word "storage." I don't think it implies inventory when it doesn't say inventory. I think it means "storage." But I can certainly do legal research, seeing what courts or how courts have interpreted "storage."
I would appreciate that, because we know what use is. You sell it, they take it out the door and they use it or however.
Storage is the regular term. However, the dictionary defines "storage" as how it would be interpreted in this ordinance.
Okay, all right. If you could do that, I would appreciate it.
Well, I have to take direction from the whole council, unfortunately.
You're saying storage, like if I buy a bag of fertilizer and I store it until next spring to use it?
The normal, yeah.
That's how I would read "storage."
Yes.
Okay. I'm not thinking as I'm running a multi-billion dollar business. I'm thinking as I'm a homeowner and I'm paying a sales tax on an item that I'm buying.
Because you bought it.
Because I bought something at Tractor Supply and I don't need it until next spring.
Okay, so you're assuming the storage of the consumer, not the storage of the retailer?
It's assessed when they...
When the item's sold to a retail location, correct? Okay.
During our council discussion on the ordinance, and I know I asked some questions to Carolyn as well about the language. Much of this language is necessarily legal language for...
Boilerplate.
Exactly. For the ordinance. And section seven is just that. That's what it is. Legal language.
Yes, and again...
1.5% sales tax.
In legal terms, if a word is not defined specifically, as it is not, if storage is not defined in here specifically, then it is the normal use of the word. So I wouldn't imply inventory for the word "storage," unless they use the word "inventory." And certainly, like I said, I can research that. I don't know how courts have interpreted it or how other jurisdictions have interpreted it. But unless you're defining the word, it's the normal course use of the word.
I think if we're in agreement that this is making reference to the consumer and not the retailer, then I'm comfortable with the word. But if that's our interpretation of it, and I could certainly see where that would make sense, that this is storage by the consumer, as you point out, as opposed to storage by the retailer, that would be my concern. So, that's fine. Thank you.
Mr. Sprague, are you still requesting additional research on section seven? I'm sorry, say... Are you still requesting additional legal research on question, on section seven?
Well, I don't want to run up the ticket on her account on this whole thing, but it would be nice that, I think for the audience and the people that are concerned about this, that they might like to hear it. But again, I'll leave it up to the majority of the board. I can make the motion if you like and see what it...
No motion necessary, Mr. Sprague. Call of colleagues on the council, what are your thoughts? Mr. Hudson?
No, I assume that storing fuel that I bought for my lawnmower, or like I said, fertilizer for my lawns, I would have never thought of inventory kept at a store that would be taxed upon or warehouse, storage. My inventory.
I think in reading further in the sentence, Forrest.
Yes.
It says imposed on the storage, comma, use, comma, or other consumption in the city of tangible personal property purchased from any retailer. On or after. So it's tying it back to the purchased property.
That makes it more clear to me. Thank you.
Mr. Vodden, your thoughts? Legal research, yes or no?
No.
Mr. Thomas?
No, I think that answers the question. Does it talk?
Yes, it did.
It says personal property purchased from any retailer.
I agree. We have consensus with the council. Good. Any further comments, questions from the council in reference to item 6A? This, we have a resolution before us, a pleasure of the City Council of Reference.
I would move a resolution of the Willow City Council calling and ordering the submission of the qualified electors of the city of Willow's a ballot measure to increase the general purpose transaction and use sales tax by 1.5% at the general election be held on Tuesday, November 5th, 2024.
Councilmember Thomas has removed that item 6A be approved as presented. Councilmember Vodden has seconded the motion. Further discussion? Mr. City Clerk, this will be a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Thomas. Councilmember Thomas.
Yes.
Councilmember Sprague.
No, I'd like to qualify that again.
Councilmember Vodden. Vice Mayor Hudson.
Yes.
Mayor Hanson.
Hi. Medicarius Order 1, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I could kind of reiterate and qualify my no vote for that. Again, I'm concerned, you know, we've got a 15-year sunset. We know that that's never going to go away. That increase is going to be there forever. But again, my concern is allowing the flexibility of it to be spent, however the council at the time might determine. I, that doesn't give me a great deal of comfort. I think if we could do a a threshold two-thirds vote and secure this specifically for public safety, I think that would go a long ways for the comfort of the voters, and I think it would go a long ways. I have to disagree with my good friend, Mr. Thomas. I don't think that this has got the mileage and the support locally as much as you think. I might be wrong. We'll see come November 6th.
Thank you, Mr. Sprague. Moving on to item 6B, Educational Action Plan Regarding City Finances. Review and discuss potential educational action plan, also known as the plan, objectives, messages and activities regarding the city's finances. Make amendments as necessary and/or direct staff to take all necessary actions undertake the education action plan and authorize the city manager to spend up to $10,000 from related plan materials such as design, printing and direct mail. City Manager Marty Brown.
Mayor, may I step up for a second?
Uh, Mr. Mayor. Can we take a five-minute recess, please? Thank you. Good evening. It's 7:26 PM and we're reconvening in open session from a court adjournment. I just called for item 6B, City Manager Marty Brown, item 6B, please.
Yes, the council made a call, had to make a call and announced a fiscal emergency and placing a sales tax, a sales tax on the March ballot. I had brought forward the idea through some sort of education action plan to share the community the city's fiscal situation and help voters understand the situation of finances in the city in the short and long term. And so, to that end, I'm bringing back that plan, basically. Really, it's several ideas, ideas about messaging and some objectives for educating the public about the situation, as well as potential messaging, and also a list of, sort of laundry list of the types of activities that we could potentially undertake in helping to disseminate and staff information. And for tonight, you know, in addition to that, to also ask for $10,000, if you recall, I originally had recommended 15,000. Councilmember Vodden suggested that maybe that's 10,000. At the time, before we knew we weren't going to be able to pick a sales tax on the March ballot, the majority council had the need for the 10,000, so I just brought that back in reference. This time, it was $10,000. So, the idea here is, you know, it's a mix of several different things, that different ideas about how to educate the public about the situation. I just proactively brought it forward. There might be things you like, that you don't like, that resonate with you, as I said in the staff report, resonate with council members. I understand that, but it wasn't intended that everything here is a recommendation and you should love all of it. The idea is to get, you know, your ideas and product selling about how we could share with the public the city's situation and some of the activities that we would undertake in the future with that. So, with that, the possibilities are, you come up with some ideas tonight, and Sherry put some things out of here that at least the majority of the council can agree to and bring on. Or you want staff to take some of your input, refine it, and then bring it back April 23rd with some refinement, with something that you could know you're going to just affirm and vote on, that could be another approach. Or throw the whole thing out, that'd be another approach. So there's a lot of different options for the council this evening. It always depends on the discretion and what we can do out of the staff. That I'll open it up for the rest of the council.
Yeah, thank you, Marty. Mr. Thomas, would you like to begin?
Not yet, no.
Okay. Mr. Vodden?
Why? Why not indeed? Why not? So clearly, we have the ability to educate the public and to inform them of the benefits and value that are associated with this sales tax increase, with its true impact on them by emphasizing who will pay half of it, and by noting that nobody makes a purchase based on the sales tax rate. It does not happen. You don't buy anything and say, "What's the sales tax rate? Oh, I'm not going to get it." It does not happen. It's been noted already that the actual total cost to anyone in sales tax land is minimal. You buy a car, which we don't sell, and well, it's not in Willow's, but you don't even buy the car based on the sales tax. You fight and kick and scratch and they tell you X thousands of dollars, and then they add. You say, "Okay." You don't say, "No." So, the point is, is I think that this is our opportunity to have a positive outcome. A positive outcome that's based on benefits to be received by the citizens who will vote for it. And of course, most of the people who pay will never vote for it. They have no jurisdiction to vote for it. I'm opposed to defense. I'm not on the defense for this deal. I don't see this as, you know, reparations for bad behavior in the past. I think this is an opportunity for the future. I see, you know, I see educating the public about increased awareness of the city's revenue sources and expenditures. Most citizens don't really care. You know, they don't pay attention to it, but that's education. And so I'm excited about the possibility... Um, and so I'm, I'm excited about the possibilities here. Um, and there's a line here that says the city's current revenues cannot sustain, that's negative, I want to not put negative in there. I don't, I, it may be true, but again, remember, the citizens of this community want to know how it affects them and what's in it for them. That's not a negative, that's the truth of sales. Um, uh, see, so the website, I don't believe people look at websites anymore very much, and you can do that by checking the metrics on the city website. And if it is good, it's probably people checking for things and such and so on. Um, uh, I don't think the term structural deficit should be used, the citizens who will vote for this don't understand or care about structural deficit. It took, I, anyway, I don't think, I think it's confusing. Um, a separate Facebook page, again, no one looks at this stuff anymore in terms of this issue, in my opinion. Uh, what I would like, and I'd like to see the metrics, if we actually do a webpage for this and a, and a Facebook posting, a page for this, show me the metrics on what we have already, because nobody above and beyond what we've got is probably going to look at any social media. However, there is one that's working really well, it's called electronic email outreach. If there was any way we could reach out to the citizens who will vote for this, oh, by the way, that's our audience. It's not somebody who lives somewhere else, not within the city limit, our audience are the voters. Only those that have the legal right to vote for this is who we need to educate and inform. Uh, so sell benefits, no crying wolf, uh, how the sales tax money will be used to benefit them. Clearly, and, and I, I think either, uh, Gary said, Mr. Hanson said it, but the thing we've invested the least in over all the years I've been around this city hall is infrastructure. Well, why can't we have an industry? We don't have the infrastructure. So if, if I could take the money and do anything with it, it would be to build infrastructure, so that comes under benefits. Can we make the city more meanable, more acceptable, more attractive for the revenue that Forrest knows that we need to create as the real alternative to the long term? Uh, how many votes do we need to, uh, based on an estimate voter history? I mean, I'd like to know, based on history, it's an estimate, a bit of a what-if, how many votes do we need to win, pass, to make fifty-one percent? I'd like to know that number, I think it's critical mass, if about three hundred people voted last year.
Um, there's six hundred households, it's, uh, three, uh, I gotta go back and get the numbers on that.
What did, what did, what did we hit in the election?
The issue is though, you'll never know what you need, because you don't know how many people are actually.
Of course you don't, of course, but that doesn't stop us from strategizing based on a number, you know, and working the bigger populations where the most outcome is possible by people who aren't ready, already convinced or, you know, been here a long, long time and just don't think we should do anything because they're happy. What's wrong with Willow's? There's nothing wrong with Willow's, I've got everything I need, what's the problem? There are people out there that feel that way and maybe rightfully so, but we need people who are unhappy. We need them to want change and we need them to know that it has to be funded. So I think we've won the election on five or six hundred votes, I wouldn't be surprised if we can't win this on some number, anyway. That's, that's my input and, uh, so feel strongly. There, that's good, that's great, well, that means we'll get more people who might be more inclined to look at the future, not the past. Because they are not regular players in the game of politics and government. And, uh, so sell benefits, it's a, it's a, it's going to be, it's challenging because, anyway, thank you so much for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Vodden. Mr. Frank?
Um, yeah, I'm gonna stand pat on this, um, my position on this, I think I've demonstrated by the math that if this were sales tax were specifically earmarked and specified for public safety, the other items that you want to spend the money on would in fact, by earmarking this for public safety, you would still get the same amount of money that you want. It would be earmarked for a specific item and it would then free up the remainder of the general fund that would allow you to continue to do the other things that, that we want to do for the city, so I don't have a problem with that. I think if we would took the approach that I'm suggesting and having this earmarked specifically for public safety, with a single press release, you could accomplish what you want to accomplish here for ten thousand dollars for the, um, educational effort that you want to make. Uh, so I'm gonna stand pat, I'm gonna vote no on this because I think it should be, in fact, a secured, uh, sales tax use for specifically for public safety, thank you very much.
Mr. Hudson? Well, first, I'd like to remind the council that when a council votes on an item, whether it's unanimous or not, the majority vote is the entire vote. And that even if a council member is opposed to that item, they are supposed to back the majority in that decision. Um, and so I'd just like to put that out, that that is in our city council member policies and manuals handbook, I don't have it right here in front of me, but I do know it's in there. Um, as far as the outreach on this, I do believe that fire, police, public works, and most importantly, uh, recreation are big ones that we need to hit on. Um, we have a lot of deferred maintenance done around the city, um, sidewalks, which we had hit on, um, strongly last meeting. Um, it's something that obviously needs to be addressed. Um, and I think that this is a way to start providing that and offering that to our citizens and as a way to reach out. Uh, I do have to semi disagree with Councilmember Vodden, I believe that Facebook may be a good opportunity, um, for outreach, especially if you're able to get it targeted, I believe you can target it to a geo graphical location. Um, not super tech savvy on that anymore, because it's usually not all good information on Facebook anymore. Um, but, um, I do believe that that is still a, a way to reach voters, um, as well. But I do think that we need to do something to at least get it out there that this is coming up and that, uh, let the people decide, that's what we're here to do, just put it into their hands and give them the option to choose which way to go. And that's all we're discussing right now. Um, but I think the things that they want to see done are the police, fire, public works, and recreation. And definitely see, uh, see some improvements coming down the road is really, like, infrastructure, as you were stating, is really what we need to make sure that we're able to maintain. Um, so that's my two cents on it, I'm still going through, um, kind of what's on here and picking and choosing, so I haven't come up with a set direction for you yet, but yes. My general consensus is yes. Um, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Now I'm ready.
Okay, you're, go for it.
I, the way I've seen Facebook rage throughout this community, I think Facebook is certainly someplace we should be. Um, we could have our own Facebook page and get that, those posts shared throughout, which would spread the thing, the, the message. Um, there's also Instagram, X, and fourteen other social media outlets that I don't participate in. X seems to be a popular one, but I don't know anybody in Willow's that's on it, so. I, I'm the wrong guy, no, I'm not on X, I.
What's going on in Willow's?
What's going on in Willow's is Facebook. Um, I like the message, "With sustainable revenues and enhanced city services, we can create the future we all want for our youth, seniors, and each other for the benefit of all." That's the second to the last one on page sixty-two, it's positive. It, um, exactly what we need, with sustainable revenues, we can enhance the city services. We could, um, talk about some of the things we need to do, the C I P and all the rest of that stuff that we have need to fund and things that we need to do. Just look at the effort it's taken to, to try to bring back the city pool, that has been a revenue issue, not a desire. So if we had the revenue, we'd be able to have that pool and it'd been up and running. So that's the type of sustainable revenues that provides enhanced city services. And I think that's the message we need to send. Um, I think a, uh, press releases, uh, as to what we're about. Um, speaking to the various service organizations and wherever we can take port with anybody who's willing to listen. Um, I know when I'm interacting with city residents, I ask them what their, what their thoughts are on what the city needs and if they get an earful. And the response would be, imagine what we could do if we had the money to do what you just asked for. So, um, positive message, sustainable revenues. And we all need to work towards, uh, getting this done, and I think town hall meetings for sure. Um, one or two of them would be probably critical mass.
May I add something real quick? Yes, Mr. Mayor. Um, and as far to the budget on this, I would like to see if there's a way to co-mingle it with the next agenda item and possibly if we're able to dampen the budget on both of those and combine them almost, because I think they kind of play into each other as to what we're trying to accomplish. But I think when we get to the next agenda item, Marty, maybe spread some light on whether or not that's a possibility or not. I'm just throwing out, and great, I, I, I'm just throwing out. Okay, I was just winging it there, I popped into my head there last second, so I was, so that was, that was all I had, but, yeah, I do believe a town hall meeting would be appropriate. Um, you know, walking and talking to people, that's the best way to get to know them. Um, I talk to people when I'm coaching Little League games and things like that, and so I, you know, getting out there in front of people face to face is some of the best ways to communicate. I think that's where we need to kind of focus a lot of our attention as well.
I would ask if you're urging a vote, a, a yes vote on the ballot when you're talking?
You have to be careful with that.
Are you, so are you asking me directly?
Yes.
No, I'm speaking in general, that I talk to people and they ask me how I like city council in general, basically, how I enjoy being up here, basically, so.
So you're not urging a yes vote on the, on the ballot, maybe?
No, I'm not, I'm not talking specifically about the ballot measure.
Okay.
Let me clarify that.
Me either.
For the.
No, that's all I had.
No, I, uh, yeah, Marty, this is a, you know, a very comprehensive list, very good list. I like all of the options on the list, how's that, how's that for, for, for an answer? You know, and I respect my colleagues and, and obviously, and, and their input, but all four of your objectives are, are sound, reasonable, uh, true. Uh, well stated, uh, I, I agree with keeping the message positive, uh, objective for dispel the myths about city revenues and expenditures. I don't know how you can dispel the myths and keep it positive, but if there's a way to do that, that would be good. You know, just, you know, don't let the facts get in the way of a good story, you know, is what I like to say, but, uh, you know, just, you know, just, you know, it is what it is, and, uh, you know, like I say, positive messaging. And I, and David, I agree with, uh, with, uh, almost all of your comments, except the social media comments on the side of that one. I, I think we, we should pursue the, you know, all the social media outlets, including the webpage, and I understand, and it, I get it, I, I, I agree with you. I agree with the bulk of your thoughts, I just think it's a, you know, be a good idea to, you know, this is an educational campaign, let's put the information out using all of our resources, I, I think, this is my thought.
Almost, almost no doubt.
Well, you know, user friendly, that's the key, because it's still the city website, it's, this is information, this is educational information, that, that's what it is. And, yeah, an easily accessible link, right, I think that's a great idea.
And confirming this is all informational, it is not yes or no, it is strictly just what the information that we have. Correct.
Yeah, informational education, the facts. And, uh, like you say, you know, and, and on, on, uh, page sixty-two, you know, all of your, and, and my colleagues have mentioned this, you know, your first bullet point, fire, police, fire, public works, of course, city services, and you can't live without, and, and moving on from there, all, all of six of these bullet points are all relevant. I, I agree with all of them, including, you know, the, the following page, the, the, the two bullet points. Uh, and, you know, and especially, and I don't think that, uh, you know, the, the last bullet point is extremely important, we need a long-term financial revenue and expenditure plan that we can count on, control and be proud of. Local control, the local control aspect, that's important, because that's what we're doing. We're asserting local control over our destiny and our future. And, uh, those, those are my thoughts, town hall meetings, oh sure, you know, at least one town hall, and, you know, more if necessary, but, uh, you know.
I'm sorry, say again?
You've watched me walk, okay, I don't walk very well, very far.
But, you know, in reference to, you know, you, you know, your, your additional, your additional, uh, you know, the, the additional bullet points and getting the word out, I mean, they're all extremely relevant. Getting the facts, period. Informational education. That's my thoughts. Anything further?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I, maybe I misunderstood Mr. Hudson when he started out with some comments I'd like him to repeat and let, give me some clarity on where you were headed with this idea of, uh, sounded like agreement, total agreement, it was just part of the protocol manual that I had to agree with everybody that just.
That once a city council makes a decision as a majority, that the entire city council is behind that decision. And you are still opposed to a decision that the city council majority has made. Democratic seat.
I guess I'm not making, I'm not connecting the dots on that thought.
You're still opposing the fact that we're trying to, that we're putting the sales tax on the ballot and you're, even though we as a majority said yes to putting on the ballot, you're still opposing that.
Okay, so the theory is I've got to go along to get along?
No, it's not, if that's the theory. Theory of going along to getting along, it's a theory that if there's a decision made by the majority of the council, the entire council is to abide by that decision. And that's not a, it's not a theory, it's literally written down in our policy procedures and manual.
And I don't recall reading that, you'd have to be site-specific for me, but if that's the approach that you suggest that we take, I'm gonna suggest that we get staff, about five well-trained monkeys, and give them a rubber stamp, so, thank you very much.
Referring to me as a monkey?
Pardon me?
You just referred to me as a monkey?
No, I did not, I said, replace us with five well-trained monkeys and give them a rubber stamp. So I'm sorry if, if you disagree.
I'm saying that we're able to be up here and do our debates and, and have our discussion.
Yep.
And I'm not, I'm not opposed to that. I thoroughly actually enjoy our discussions that we have. I don't have a problem debating and disagreeing on items, that's the great thing about America, that's the great thing about a democracy, is we're able to debate and disagree. But then, we're a democracy, so when a majority votes, that's the way the vote's supposed to go, and I'm not doing anything other than saying that we have a list of protocols that we're supposed to follow and those protocols, that was one of the protocols that is listed in that. That's all I'm stating, I mean, you're right, I don't have my protocol manual right here in front of me, so I cannot look it up for you.
I'm more inclined to, uh, serve the people as opposed to serving your protocol, thank you.
Well, it's common in team management, when a team gets together to do a task, let's just say a football game, and the coach and the quarterback go out in the huddle and they say, this is the play we're going to do, and one of the players doesn't like the play, if that player runs off the field instead of playing that play despite his or her objections, that's not good teamwork, that's, I think, what he's trying to say, there is no law that says you can't oppose this, obviously. Uh, what we would really like is for you not to campaign against it, but again, that comes under interpretive free rights. But the team dynamic concept, companies, if one team member undermines the corporate mission, corporate goals and objectives, eventually they either create a, you know, a division in the whole team or the company, or they get gone. You know, we're a team up here, we're five men, in this case, who are challenged with making the city of Willow's better. Not perfect and not fix old wounds, but better in the future. And so to whatever extent we do, whatever we do, if it's for the betterment of the community, then good for us, and if it divides us in the community, bad for us.
Thank you for comments, Councilmember Vodden, uh, I'll open this up to public comments now, any public comments in reference to item six B? Anything? No, okay, thank you. Councilmembers, further questions, comments, before we move forward? Anything further?
No.
Pleasure to the council in reference to item six B. Or, like, do we have consensus? Enough to work with?
What do you mean?
I, I think you're talking about the ten thousand dollars?
Yeah, there is the monetary number.
Yeah, there, there is, the, the city manager spent up to ten thousand, that could be in the form of a motion for that.
Well, given also just to add the feedback support, if they can, if they're comfortable with that being the direct general direction to move forward with starting the education action plan, in addition to the funding, that's ten thousand dollars.
I think we've given you the direction, and I thought that ten thousand was going to be, we wanted to discuss it with the second phase.
Yeah.
Add it on the agenda?
Does that make sense when I'm?
I know what you're asking, whether or not that proposed four thousand to be different between the ten thousand. Certainly we could do that, I, I'm a little bit reluctant to do that, only to.
Or just say it, like a, like a twelve thousand total for both items, just.
So maybe ten thousand is just the amount from the next item, and you say two thousand is enough.
Okay.
Did you say twelve thousand?
That's what he. Yeah, yeah, so instead of it being a fourteen thousand dollar total, it'd be like a twelve thousand dollar total.
Okay.
Because I feel, I feel like this next item also is an educational item to show that as a council, we're trying to create roadways to move forward. Assume it.
It certainly, yes, it is part of the.
Okay. So I, no, I'm good with the, with this, with item six B as it is.
With the ten thousand dollars?
Yes.
Not good seed.
Then we'll address the funding.
Okay, very good.
The same question is, do we need a motion?
You could use money.
That's what I thought. We'll move.
So, Mr. Vaughn, could you state your motion, please?
Oh, yeah, where?
Six B.
Educational plan, I move that we approve the recommendation to discuss potential collapse on it. It's on. I never get this right. I move that we, you would discuss potential action, is that it?
Just read the last sentence.
Okay, offer, I move that we authorize the city manager to spend up to ten thousand dollars on related plan materials, design training and direct mail for the education program and getting approval for the sale of.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Very good. Mr. Vaughn's moved to approve item six B as stipulated, is there a second? Second, Vice Mayor Hudson has the second, further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed for the reasons I stated earlier, if matter carries four one.
Item six C, city council goal and priority setting workshop. Discuss and authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with RIA collaborator, collaboratories. For an amount not to exceed four thousand dollars to facilitate the council goal and priority setting workshop. The result in a visioning document about how the council envisions expending future general fund monies, as well as future goals and objectives for city development and growth. This matter was requested to be adjourned by Vice Mayor Hudson, Marty Brown would like to begin?
Yes, also, if you may recall, the prior council meeting, Vice Mayor Hudson, staff will explore options for some sort of goal setting or prioritization workshops. To really outline a vision and goals and objectives for the future of the city as a team, when it comes to revenue and chemistry. Presumably that would improve. So I spoke with people who CEO members of and we collaborate with and monitor some of the grant funds. And they suggested we collaborate. And spoke with Giovanni, he's the principal there, and basically the, the proposal is to have a three workshops where be with the individual entities, they can apply to the forty-five minutes, maybe to members of the council, and then develop and design the workshop every time. The outcome is feedback, which means council member, would be an initial workshop to identify, that'd be about three hours long, to identify visions and priorities, and then come back for a second workshop, again, up to three hours, to really define and refine those goals and priorities. I mean, I would work with him and actually consolidate the report and draw all the information together. Basically, the executive agency can save some money, give it back to him to make sure that it reflects what we came out of the council workshop, send it back to the council for presentation, and people can start using that information in the outcome of the workshop, to talk to the community and the public, and their vision, statement and goals and priorities. So, all total, that expected cost of eighty dollars. I just left the second one at four thousand dollars. Not more than.
I see that three times, yeah, thank you, Marty, Vice Mayor Hudson.
No, I think Marty kind of hit it pretty square there, my goal here was, when I was appointed to the city council, there was no roadmap for anyone to follow, there was a lot of us catching problems and trying to find solutions to those problems, rather than taking a proactive measure to repair the infrastructure, to grow, to and develop our rec department. And so I was like, it'd be great to have some sort of a roadmap for not just our current city council, but city council in two years or in five years or ten years, however long we want to look at this. I believe we talked about three years to five-year roadmap, to kind of get us started and get us underway with it. But give some guidance and some direction that the city wants, wants to go in, so that when the seats up here are replaced, they have a direction, they understand, you know, this is our goal, this is where we want to be at, this is what we want to see in five years, you know. Do we want to see a police department, do we want to see, you know, our own rec building where we have our own gym, where we can, you know, hold different events at? Do we want to see lights at our baseball fields, do we want to see the parks, you know, updated every so often? Different, just different items like that, do we want to set a five-year program or plan for repairing sidewalks or roads and things like that? And that's something that we don't really have. It's a lot of, it seems like there's a lot of, we take the problems as they come to us, rather than trying to hit the problem before it becomes a problem. And so this was just one idea that a lot of other cities do have in place, that I think would really benefit Willows and would really help repair the relationship between the council and the citizens, and show that we're a united front, and that we want to do better for them, and that's what we're here to do.
Thank you. Public comment, reference to this matter, we'll move forward, is there any public comment? Thank you. Council members, questions, comments, who would like to begin, Rick?
Well, I'll start by throwing a wrench into it, you proposed May twenty-first and Thursday, May twenty-fourth.
I just recommended some.
I am not in town.
Okay.
That week.
Well, as you may have noticed on the last page of the proposal for attachment two, there were available dates that in May that the consultant had, and so those are other options, I just was proposing two days that are not on council. Except for the.
Can we, we can, we can discuss dates, I think that another time than not during the meeting.
I would agree that, that if we had an actual action plan, not just another study that gets put in the binders on the shelf. That's always been said, this would not be, this would be our, this council's action goals and objectives for the next two to five years, I'm assuming, which is what, what the window is.
Not ours, but the city's.
Well.
You know, like, and so, yes, and the idea would be, it'd be on the city's website, it would show, this is the progress. One of the, one of the cities that I saw, they actually showed the progress that they've made in that specific category when it came to, uh, the rec development, or their infrastructure, or, you know, what have you, the different categories that they had. I can't think of all of them off the top of my head, and theirs was very exhaustive, and it was very fancy, I'm not saying we have to go that fancy. When we were, at least we're first getting started, but yes, I do believe like a roadmap to show this is, this is where, what we want to complete in the next three years. Or this is what we want to complete in the next five years. I think that's.
And that would give Marty and Joe direction, is that right?
Well, I mean, I, I'll tell you, it really does help, actually provide roadmap for the city manager and all the department heads. Then when something comes up, we think, oh, well, it's part of council's goal, before I break word, you know, fifty-easy chargers in the downtown, and that's not something the council cares about, so not going to, we're not going to spend time running after a plan and doing things that we already know is probably not efficient, right, I mean, time is finite, so it does help provide a roadmap for us about what to initiate and what to.
I would support this effort.
Anything further, Rick? David?
Yeah, I do, I was trying to find something, because there is in corporate, in all forms of organizational structure, there's this grand terminology that I'm blacking out on, so, like, it's a general statement of why we're here. And it has a general, a whole series of statements about, again, macro, but again, guiding lights, guiding statements about how we will do what we do. And then it has a thing called core values, and that type of planning.
Mission statement.
Overlay is credible and can work, if you can come back and say, the reason we are here is, does it fit that mission? Our mission statement, thank you, and, thank you. And then, and then all core values, does it, does it, you know, does it do all these things because, because here's the detail. There have been many, 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 many roadmaps over the years, haven't there? You've been through them, all laid out, all laid down, all the details, too much detail, how many of them were followed for any length of time? I don't want to be cynical, but very few. Realistically, because what happens is, we here tonight won't be here in the future, and whether it's a year from now or three years from now, or I don't know, we really don't have the right to obligate the future city council in directions that should, they should be taking in the future. If we have the mission statement and the core values, then they can operate under those, some of that's in a book, by the way, the protocol, whatever you call it, the how to be a good city councilman stuff, person, so, and new people always have new ideas, problems show up and, you know, the map doesn't fit if it's specific, so, you know, I, 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 I think that, again, new people, new ideas, new leadership, new visions, new maps. And rec made a reference to all the studies that are on the shelf, it's a standard come, almost a go. And they're out there, just go get them, you want to study, change the date. So I, I guess I'm saying to us is that I'm not sure where this would go, especially if it got detailed to the point of of just a waste of our time, effort and energy, because the details, the devil would be in the details, and failure would be in the details. The macro, the mission statement, core values, that stuff, I think that's what more than planned, like on Monday. You could speak.
Anything further?
No, thank you.
Mr. Drake?
I do, first off, I have to commend you for the idea, I compare with you one hundred percent. I could not find my copy, but I remember the two thousand plan, Vision for Willow. The Downtown Revitalization Plan, two thousand three. Economic Development Plan, two thousand thirteen, Economic Development Plan, two thousand eighteen. And I would take our memory back, and we both have more hair. Two thousand ten or eleven, I believe, that we, Rick and I and another half a dozen business people started an organization, we called ourselves Citizens for Economic Sustainability. And we were successful in being able to convince the city council at that time to facilitate a, what's referred to as a SWAT meeting, I'm sure you've heard of those, and so on. Christine Zoppi from the county department held that, and I don't think that we had any less than maybe six to eight meetings over probably a two to an half month period of time. Very productive, we did identify a mission statement, Dave, out of it in particular, and we did create a roadmap of addressing the various things that you're actually talking about doing. So in concept, I don't have a problem, but I agree with Rick and David, and I'll use this one as an example, when that SWAT analysis was done, and I went into the city manager's office at that time and asked if it's printed, and he says, oh, yeah, it is, and I said, can I have a copy of it? And he said, oh, yeah, sure, I got it right, oh, I'm sorry, they already carried out the garden. Okay, so that's how far some of these things go, so I, in concept, I don't have a problem with trying to be able to do something like this, but the reality is, we've done so many of them already, and they sit on a shelf, I think what happens is the elected officials kind of rely on the appointed officials to pick up the ball and run with it, and it never goes unless there's a spark plug that stays behind it and keeps on that. So I don't know, I'm, I'm a, it's a nominal amount for what could be a very productive meeting and a productive outcome, but again, I'm just concerned it just become another study. I, I gave you my copies of those, you will remember how many of those yellow, or binders that I have, that you looked through to see, and there's a lot of good stuff in them. It's still, like you say, it could have been dated twenty, in two thousand, but still be effective in twenty twenty-four, if we would just do it. So I don't know, I'm, I'm in mixed emotions on them.
Well, what I would add to this is, it's short and succinct, as opposed to a extensive, long study that we've always generated. And if it were simple, simplified, two or three pages, four pages, whatever it turns out to be, where we would have this is, this is what, and I say this council, for the citizen, that can actually direct, because we're the ones that can direct staff, these are the things we want them to work on. I think in that regard, it's beneficial, because we could say, this is our short-term goal, two, three, four, five years. What we want staff to work on. And then we actually get something done, instead of this great scheme, where nobody knows where it's to start. So it gets set aside.
And I think that's kind of what.
So if it's simple, succinct, and without a whole lot of this is the desire we want to have, how it happens, I don't think we have to get into the meat and potatoes. We just need to say that this is kind of what we'd like to see happen. We'd like to see pickleball courts, I'm going to use that as an example.
Right.
Tennis courts, maybe a dog park, whatever those things might be for recreation, we'd have to see lights at the ball field, and we want to see the sidewalks fixed. Whatever those things might be, and if they're succinct, that they have something to work on. And it has to be within, like I said, two to five years, because it's going to take some time to find the funding. Funding is obviously going to be dependent upon our success in November. And that's the kind of stuff that we could say to people, this is what we want to do with our enhanced revenue.
That was kind of my goal behind the idea.
To the point, and we've moved towards that, and I think that's where the value is, and I don't want a big old forty-page study. Nobody's going to read it, nobody's going to.
No.
I want it short and to the point.
Yeah, no, my idea here is to follow the KISS principle, keep it simple, stupid. Because when you look, for example, the financial statements that we got, I don't want it to look like this. These are, this is way too, this is way too in-depth, I want something that if you pull it up, your attention span can go through the entire thing in one sitting, right, the human technique, the the human attention span is slowly getting smaller and smaller and smaller, it used to be about thirty seconds, I think, now we've actually beat out goldfish with the slowest attention span. Or the shortest attention span, sorry. No, I want something that's very basic, we're, we're here as a management, essentially is the best way to look at it, right? We're here to look at the big picture, that's what I want to see, I want to see the fifty thousand foot elevation view, so that staff can be down there at the ground level, taking care of it all, but at fifty thousand foot elevation, our hands aren't in it, but we're seeing the progress being made. And it's a direction for us to say, yes, we want to develop X, Y and Z. But we're keeping our hands out of it. It's giving staff a direction to go do their jobs and work towards a direction that would benefit the city overall. How finite we get into it, or whether we're macro or micro on it, is going to be dependent upon how we talk to the person that we meet with. Um, and I think that that's kind of up to us. I do, I do know that we have had a lot of studies done. They have really big, busy names. And honestly, reading the title of some of those makes people just throw them out the window. I just want the City of Willow's roadmap is all I want to see. And I just want a general plan of improving the city is what I was looking forward to. Um, and I thought now is a great time to put something like that in place to show that, um, you know, we do have a plan. And that we do want to see a future here. I do. I have three kids that I'm planning on raising here until, you know, I'm able to kick them all out of the house or have them move into their own places. So I'm going to be here a while because I have a four-year-old. And I don't plan on leaving. And so this is something that I want to see go through. You know, and this is something where I want to see progress being made within our, our city. And I thought that this was a great way to do that, so that when somebody steps in here, as I had, into a new position of, and not knowing necessarily what city council was at the time. Helps really kind of give them a guideline of, hey, this is the general goals that we're looking to accomplish. Do you have ideas to help us accomplish these goals? Rather than coming in and shooting from the hip.
Actually, Mr. Hudson, there's some excellent ideas in these, like, these, just these three, I'm sure I'm representing about ninety thousand dollars that's been. But there were some, there are.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not discrediting what was in those at all. No, that's not what my intention. But when you throw out revitalization of economic growth plan to the, the, the general population, they're looking at that and going, hmm, I'll save that for later. That's like me asking customers to read their insurance policy. It's great bedtime reading if you're not able to fall asleep. So, um, yeah, so that's what I want to stay away from. But like I said, it was just an idea that, um, wanted to throw out to you, and Marty had done a little bit of legwork on it. And, uh, she had seen it in some other cities, and so did I when I went down to my council member meeting and just kind of came up as part of the discussion. So I thought I'd throw it out and see what you guys thought.
Yes.
Absolutely. Yes.
Oh, sorry, no.
Told you you could comment on this.
Lori Prag. Well, just thinking about the ordinance that was just adopted in the last item and this discussion about the goal setting. It seems like a perfect segue to look at your sales tax oversight section of your ordinance. And where you could set this goal setting, get that input on what do we want to see happening in the next one to five years? And then tie that directly to the sales tax, which in your oversight says you're going to have town hall meetings. You're going to be publicly talking about what you're spending the money on, showing revenues. You could really do a very nice, especially if you kept a website that says, here's the revenue we're generating. Here's the priorities that we set to spend this money on. Here's what's happening in real time. And when I thought about goal setting, I always thought because of things sitting on the shelf, you know, you put something on your council walls that says, you frame it, you make it look nice, but these are our goals for twenty-five, twenty twenty-five. And as you're sitting at the dais, you can look at that and say, we're talking about these items. You just keep it very in front of you and very real. But I like the idea, Councilmember Hudson, of, of doing this now in real time as we're really articulating from your perspective, as you talk to your constituents and getting out, talking to people, what are the things that they want to see? And some of those are going to be things we can, we can really see that are tangible. And other things are going to be building the foundation for those more long-term infrastructure and economic development type activities. But I think if you take this conversation for this item and put it in the context of your sales tax oversight, you can make a really nice nexus to that and come up with some really cool ways to make it very visible to the public about money coming in, how it's being spent. This is what we heard. And these are our priorities. I think what we have to think about, or what I think about when I look at the city, is it's hard for everybody right now, but I have to set my own individual priorities and say, if I only have X, X money, I'm going to have to spend it on these things. And that's the hard sell, that we have certain things we have to do and we want to get to the we want to do. But people have to be a little bit patient, right? We have to kind of start chipping away at that. And lastly, it comes back to building trust. You know, I think that's the biggest thing. And I hope as a full council, that you all do work together to move forward and there's not that effort to continue to try and pull us in a different way. It's very divisive and it's a little heartbreaking as a long-term Willow's person to see the full council not working together in one direction, especially when the majority spoke. Thank you.
Especially when what? I'm sorry. I see. Thank you, Lori.
Anything further?
Um, Mr. Mayor, if you, if the council would like, I can send them my three-year general, uh, plan from Thunder Hill. Every three years, every year we updated the third year. So we'd have two twenty, two twenty-one, two twenty-three, then it would be two twenty-two, two twenty-three, two twenty-four. It has the mission statement, has the core values, might serve as an outline, you know, for whomever wants.
Yeah, thank you, David. You know, Evan, I think, you know, it's a good idea. I think it's, it's a great business model. It's an excellent management tool. So much of our time here is spent in, uh, Marty, Marty can attest. Former city manager Wayne can attest, just, just so much of the time is spent just putting out fires. Running around, putting out fires, running out of water. Uh, filling up with water again and go put out another fire, right? And, uh, you know, when, you know, when a, when a body, when a, when a board, when a council, when an executive and executive team has a, has a, you know, term roadmap for, uh, we're, we're on a roadway, we're on a highway, where are we going? And I agree with Rick, simple, you know. Uh, it was mentioned earlier on the SWAT analysis, which was successful at the time. I participated in it. It was great. It was, uh, extensive though. It was pretty extensive. I agree with Rick. We have, we have a plan in place. We've agreed with the council. It's called our, our capital improvement program, right? It's a living document. This, this, this coincides, and I think, I think this process just expands on our capital improvement. We've identified the priorities. It's a living document. We've identified the priorities as a council to establish as we move forward. And I think those could, uh, you know, those could work well together. Agree with, agree with, uh, uh, Lori's comments in reference to our previous issue we just discussed as well. But I, uh, I think it'd be a good idea. Uh, uh, it would, you know, let's get that, let's get that long-term vision, uh, as a council, uh, simplified in a couple of pages, like Rick said, and not, not, uh, beat this horse to death. But, uh, that way at least we, uh, we can identify the direction as a council that, that we would like to see Willow's move to benefit their citizens in the most appropriate ways. And David, you know, I, I had a, I had a, uh, a long-term vision, plan that, you know, with my office that I developed one pulling together and, uh, you know, living document, we tried to follow it. And of course, you know, it changes, living document, as your priorities change and issues come up. But I think it's, I think it's, uh, it's well worth the time. As long as it, uh, like Evan says, the KISS method, let's keep it simple. Those are my thoughts. Any further thoughts or comments from the council? Okay. Pleasure to the council on this matter.
Would move to, um, follow the recommendation of six B, no, excuse me, six C. And approve four thousand dollars to facilitate this process with two thousand dollars coming from the ten thousand dollars. We approved in six B. Oh, yes, fifty percent, fifty percent.
So, uh, Councilmember Thomas has moved to approve the six C as amended. Is that clear? Is the motion clear?
Yes.
Yes, very good. Is there, is there?
It come from the education action plan.
Item six B and item six C, mine. Very good. Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Vice Mayor Hudson has the second. Further discussion?
I just, uh, point out, my recollection was this was about a thirty-two page document that cost us thirty-two thousand dollars. So if we're going to get a four-page document for about four thousand dollars, it seems to be kind of in step with what we've done.
Which document are you referring to, Mr. Craig there?
Four thousand dollars a page.
Which document are you referring to?
This is the Downtown Revitalization. If I recall, I, I might be wrong. Thank you. But anyway, I'm sorry, just a little sarcasm in my, uh, Ms. Brown.
Just really quickly about the dates and time, because I know how quickly things can get away from us. So tomorrow I'm going to send you this, this, the dates. I'm going to ask for your response when your availability is by the end of this week. And I wanted to ask you, do you want to start at a special meeting? Do you want to start any earlier than six o'clock, or four to seven, or eight to six, or five to eight? Any preference there on that before I, if you want me to throw out all the options?
I think it needs to be a special meeting.
Yep.
Well, they, they both want to start early, is what I'm asking.
I do.
So you pick four to seven?
Stay out of the five to seven window. I have Zoom meetings all the time.
Five to seven?
Stay out of that window.
Oh.
Anything but five to seven.
Okay, so eight to eleven, I'll work.
Sure.
So do you want to do something like?
I just.
Ten AM to two AM, David, is that?
I don't care.
Before, before.
I only do one meeting at a time.
One, you work from the middle of the day.
Afternoon, afternoon.
Afternoon.
Afternoon. Or do we have consensus on an afternoon schedule? Very good.
I'll be fine with my kid's schedule, but yeah, we can, we can work something out.
Okay. Okay. Well, we'll be looking for the, the dates coming tomorrow, tomorrow or thereabouts. Okay, Marty, thank you. Any further discussion? Item six C. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Curiousness, thank you. Item seven, comments and reports. Item seven A, council correspondence. I received none this evening. Marty, unless there's something I'm not aware of, I haven't seen anything. Okay, very good. Item seven B, city council comments and reports. Mr. Craig, would you like to begin?
Uh, yeah, I had a interesting couple of days at Cedar Hills. Uh, last Monday, they in fact hired a brand-new manager who seems to be a very good go-getter. And, uh, has already been able to implement some good changes out there to the positive. And one of the things that she did is elevate a young man that has been out there for eighteen years, working at the maintenance level. Uh, but she put him in charge now, and already there's some, uh, other things that have gone on. I'm of the opinion, because Cedar Hills is so, such a large project and so well-known. And then sadly, the incident that occurred a couple of weeks ago that resulted in a death. I have talked to the onsite manager and I've talked to the Sacramento manager, and it indicated that I, I would be pleased to be able to help them, um, change the direction and the, um, with the visual that they've got, the reputation that they've got and so on. Because my concern is as Cedar Hills goes, so goes the image of Willow's at large. So it's, I'm not doing it as a consultant to make you comfortable. City manager, that, uh, this is stuff that I do. I have a skill set for this type of stuff. But in this particular case, I want to volunteer my time to be able to give them some direction and some pointers and some of the things that they can start doing to change their image. And they have indicated a great willingness to change the image that they've got. They agree. They want to upgrade it. I've gone through a couple of the units that they have upgraded. They've done an excellent job on renovation. They want to continue to do that. And as the new manager put it, um, I want this to look like it looked like when it was originally built. And, um, so with that, I just give you a heads up. Again, it's volunteer time, but I've got some ideas that I think they can incorporate and they agree that they would be pleased to incorporate some of those image change. Thank you.
Mr. Hudson? I have nothing. Okay. Mr. Bob?
I'm equal with Evan.
Mr. Collins?
Well, I have a couple of things. Uh, yesterday I attended the, uh, LAFCO meeting. And they are working on a preliminary budget for next year. The original, um, projection was to increase the contribution from the two cities up to a total of eighteen thousand, hundred dollars, two hundred and twenty each city. In the last past years, the LAFCO budget has been operating, they've been drawing against reserves. Um, the executive officer has, has given his notice and is inspired to retire. So they're going to be out seeking a new executive officer. So the budget was projected to increase the cost, the cover the cost of what it. With some discussion, uh, the, the LAFCO board agreed to reduce the eighteen thousand from the city down to fifteen percent to eleven thousand, sixty-eight and thirty cents. And operate on a drawing against some reserves. They have a hundred and forty thousand dollars in reserve. And then next year they'll increase it an additional ten percent to make up for the, what they expect. But they'll have a better idea of what the cost for the new executive officer would be at that time. You'll be getting a estimated budget if you haven't already got it. The other thing is, uh, tomorrow, uh, with the county, I'll be attending the Boys and Girls Club tour of the Hamilton City site. It's at three PM. Unlike the Chico that I visited, uh, Chico is a Boys and Girls Club is a community, which everybody's available to go to as a, as a child from five to fourteen, I think. Uh, this one in Hamilton City is school district-based, so if you're in the school district, you're able to attend. So it's, um, something that's actually being discussed for the City of Willow's as far as Boys and Girls Club, more along the lines of the Hamilton City Boys and Girls Club. So I will be seeing that tomorrow, three to five. Anybody wishes to go, let me know.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you. Yeah, very briefly, yesterday, uh, we had a Glen Groundwater Authority regular board meeting. Major topics of discussion were two, our groundwater sustainability plan, uh, moving forward. Working, uh, uh, hard to, uh, uh, get that plan resubmitted to the State Department of Water Resources this month. And that will be done. And also, uh, discussion on our, uh, groundwater, groundwater sustainability plan implementation fee project or current two eighteen process. And that's it for the meeting side of it. I'd just like to, to, uh, make a shout-out and a thank you to our, uh, public works team, uh, for the, you know, because out there, as all of our city employees are every day, working hard and, and just, uh, you know, connecting the, the business of the city and and just, uh, hard at it and diligently professional. But our public works team is, they're doing their annual road, alleyway road grader work. And, uh, good job, you know, they're making progress. And Josh Reed's getting quite a workout as, as the primary operator on the grader. And, uh, for anybody that hasn't ran a road grader, it's, uh, it's got a little skill set to it. It takes a little bit of, uh, catskin to get used to a grader, but, uh, he's, he's doing a good job. And, and of course, the entire team and support, which it takes the entire team to get that done, but excellent work to the public works team on. You know, it's, uh, something that, uh, is, it's obviously noticeable is, you know, thank God we've had a wet winter and we know what, we know what, what rain does to roadways and gravel roadways fade, but the alleys are, you know, pretty, pretty bad shape just from mother nature. So good, uh, good work to the public works team. Yeah, yeah, very good. So in addition to all the work they do, but, uh, they, they're doing a great job with the, with the alley, alley improvements. Item eight, closed session pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine, five four point three, the public will have an opportunity to directly address the legislative body in the item below. Prior to the council convening in the closed session, public comments are generally restricted to three minutes. Item eight A. The matter is public employee performance evaluation, Government Code Section five four nine, five seven, titled as city manager. Is there any public comment on this matter before we go into, uh, closed session? I don't think so. Everybody's, everybody's bailing. Everybody's leaving. So, okay, thank you, everybody. Thank you for attending tonight. Time is eight thirty sharp. We'll be, uh, moving into closed session at this time. Yeah, good evening. We're, uh, reconvening a Willow City Council meeting, uh, into, uh, open session from our closed session. Discussion, the time is eight fifty-two PM. In reference to item eight A, uh, closed session discussion, public employee performance evaluation titled city manager information was given to staff. That's the report out. The time is, uh, now, uh, eight fifty-three, twenty fifty-three hours and meeting adjourned. Have a great rest of the week. Good night. eight fifty-three, twenty fifty-three hours, and meeting adjourned. Have a great rest of the week. Good night.